I did a good job with the opinion. I mean, that's gonna also put us in a much better position. And professional Bucks County. No, they are not. That's a art awesome surprise leaves. Ready?
Sir.
Ready? All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. We would ask that you rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you for bearing with us. So we had a challenge with connecting the live stream, but IT has always has come through and and will ensure that we are going to be live streamed for our meeting today. As you may or may not be aware, this is a workshop meeting. And while we will do a lot of approvals in our legislative meeting, this is normally the meeting where we actually have some level of discussion and deliberation around some of the issues that we will face next week. Today, we also have an election board meeting related to second certification, and I know election board is also in the or the election bureau is in the process of a recount starting today as well. So I know they're extraordinarily busy. And we appreciate Chris being here Friday as well as today. The first order of business would be the approval of meeting minutes, which will be taken up next week. Is there any questions or concerns related to meeting minutes? Hearing none. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Peace.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
On November nineteenth, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the two thousand and twenty five budget, the general election, county authorities, healthcare services at Dauphin County Prison, consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, and matters of personnel. In addition to the solicitor's office, Budget and Finance Director Chris Davis was in attendance to discuss budget matters.
Any questions for Mr. Peace? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity for public participation. Again, there will be an opportunity to do public participation in election board as well. But this is the first opportunity for public participation on agenda items only today. Is there any public that wishes to participate on agenda items only? Hearing none, I'd like to call to order our election board meeting. If Chris Spackman would step forward. Our first order of business would be to approve the minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Do we have a motion to approve those particularly me particular meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Preece.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Now is the time from a election board perspective, Chris, I guess you could step back. Is there anybody that's willing to participate related to any election board items today? Any public that wants to participate? No, this is for public participation. Yeah, on agenda items today for for the election. Sure. That that after Chris is up, public comment will be up for after the final certification. Yep, we're going to give two opportunities. So any public participation on agenda items only. Hearing them, Mr. Spackman. You were up for final certification of the votes cast at the November fifth to two thousand and twenty four municipal election.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you know, on Friday, we had an election board hearing to determine provisional ballot challenge hearing. As of now, I have not been aware of any challenges or appeals to your decisions. They had until five o'clock yesterday. But until we are able to make sure that there are no final appeals made, we'll ask that the final certification is made on a additional basis to that. So it's the opposite check and make sure that.
And defer to the solicitors that in in order? Any questions from the board related to that action?
With that, before I ask you to do the final certification of the results of the two thousand and twenty four general election, I'd like to comment on the recount. As you know, the recount for the US Senate base will begin this afternoon, one PM today in the Bureau Office. We'll first conduct logic and accuracy testing on the three high-speed scanners owned by the county, which will be used for all election day ballots, as well as the two high-speed scanners that we are leasing from Core Ballot, which is our voting system then. Those will be used for all mail-in absentee and provisional ballots that were previously scanned on the three scans we own. Under the requirements of state law, when conducting a recount, ballots may not be re-scanned on the same equipment used to conduct first election. Recount will continue Thursday and Friday, and we expect it to be completed with the scanning by the end of the day Friday. Once the results of the rescanning are complete, we will be before you again on Wednesday, November twenty seventh at ten AM to present results of the recount, the final certification, so that we can submit those results to Department of State. So unless you have questions, I mean, I would respectfully request that you give a conditional final certification of the results of the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four general election, setting aside the results of the US Senate base pending the outcome of the Department of State recorded recount.
Just let me ask a question of point order. We also have the written opinion that or the written the opinion of the Board of Elections, which will certainly memorialize the positions that we took last Friday. Is there any action that's required on that particular item in order for us then to certify? Got it. So I just will note that for the record that we do have a written opinion that will be available related to our actions that we took on Friday. And at this point, I would ask for a motion for the final certification of votes cast at the November fifth, two thousand and twenty four election.
So I'll second that.
Motion made by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Preece. Is there any discussion?
Just on a comment made by the director, is there a statewide coordinated start time today of one PM for all sixty seven counties, or it just starts today?
No, actually, today's the last day for counties to start. I don't believe that was earlier in the week when you could first start. It's just one to one o'clock was a good time for us based on the final certification thing.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
The only thing I'd follow up on, when do we anticipate concluding the recount?
I would anticipate completing Friday, but we have until Monday to complete and then Tuesday or Wednesday to send all the results.
So we have, we believe we will be finished Friday. Monday would be the deadline and Wednesday is when we need to report and certify. Okay. Any additional? Yes.
Commissioner Hartwood, it is a call for a conditional approval.
Got it. Yep.
You had called for an approval. I just want to make sure the record's clear.
I'll amend my second for a conditional.
I'll amend my motion. Same.
So there's been a motion made for a conditional approval that has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. I guess we need to sign at this point, Mr. Spackman. Any other questions for Mr. Spackman? All right, now's the time for public participation on election board items.
Hi, guys. Just real quickly, I am once again asking the election board to move the firehouse from the Friendship Firehouse in Bressler and move it to Tri-Community Elementary School. It's a school right up the street from it. It's accessible. It's an option. The firehouse has been closed due to not only several allegations of systemic racism in that firehouse, but now we also know there's been significant corruption and fraud in that firehouse, and I think that we need to move the polling station and stop supporting that firehouse and move it to the school that is right up the street and willing to be a polling place. So, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. We talked about making sure that we host another election board meeting prior to the end of this year in order to take up that matter. And I guess we should do state your name. I mean, you're a frequent flyer, but we, I guess, should state the name. You did that. Okay, Mr. Connolly.
Tom Connolly, three forty-five North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. I'm gonna follow up with the same subject. The three members of the election board, sure, the three commissioners were sent a report from an investigative panel in Swatara Township that included law enforcement, firefighter professionals, former people that worked in the Attorney General's Office, former police chief. And I'm assuming you still have that in your possession. If you get the chance, look at item number fifteen on the report that you were sent on May second. And the the basis for the report, as we just heard, was systemic long-term racial discrimination by the Bressler Fire Company and the club that they run. In the report that you received, it said additional allegations, and then it says allegations arose during the investigative review fifteen, and the second bullet point says theft allegations and further investigations dated April twenty fourth. And I'll give you a little background. Thirty-three good citizens connected to the Bressler Fire Company came forward to report discrimination. These weren't outsiders. I wasn't one of them, but they they reported racial discrimination, pretty serious in most places, maybe not so much here. They also reported a systemic system of theft that has gone on at that club for years and years that has been reported multiple times, at least to the district attorney level. We know of no, no charges. But we sure enough found out that after April third, when we took our action to suspend, and on May second, when we terminated them, we now had the opportunity for other law enforcement agencies to look at this. And I'm just gonna continue to read the report that you had that said allegations concerning theft of funds and property at both Bressler Fire Company and the Bressler Fire Company Club will be referred to the appropriate investigatory agencies. One of those would be the Dauphin County District Attorney, pretty important investigatory agency. This board said you needed to hear from somebody else on the racism. Okay, not the thirty-three good people of Bressler and their families and their friends and the neighbors. You need to hear from somebody else. Now we know that from December of twenty-three until this person was removed from that building sometime in June, one hundred and ninety-one thefts of money occurred. Many of those after April third and many of those after May second. It's almost like you did nothing, nothing on the discrimination, nothing on the theft. You were you were emailed the report. You talked about it in this room. Same bill. You have a district attorney here, but now we have a hundred and ninety-one thefts. Many of those occurred, and this is where it gets really interesting. The person committing the thefts is the person who posted posted the announcement for people to come here and keep that people, keep that place open. So remember the good people that came here to keep the place open? The person who rallied those people and posted online on a Bressler page, his own page, was the thief. He was the discriminator and the thief, and he was given more credit than the good people in our community by this group here, the the group here. So a hundred and ninety-one thefts. I'm going to tell you, to me, is terrible, but ranks much lower than the systemic racism and discrimination that you knew from the same thirty-three people. So at this point, I'm not sure what there is to discuss. You continue to do business with the place who discriminated because nobody really made it official to you that discrimination was going on, other than the witnesses and the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners and our investigative panel, who is the authority having jurisdiction. You are the authority having jurisdiction on the polling places. Everybody has a role to play in this. And to deflect and and defer decisions to other people when it's not their responsibility, I think, is is you abdicating your responsibility, and I certainly question the judgment. But now that there's a hundred and ninety-one thefts, I'm hoping that we can immediately call an emergency meeting. Because if you can show me any other polling place that discriminates and the people steal money, just move it, just move it. There's a school down the street. And and the other thing that that has come out that that's very interesting is the spouse, and it's it's crazy how this always happens. And I don't like to get too deep into family, but because that person took a shot at me with a complaint, the spouse of the person who discriminated and denied an African-American male an application to a fire company in a club that was accepting applications, then has committed a hundred innocent until proven guilty, but it's a very strong case. The spouse works here. The spouse works here, twenty-five-year employee. One of you has direct oversight over that person, and I think that's where we get this thing about the good people. The good people are not always going to be the white people, number one. And the good people are not always going to be connected to local government, number two. And I'm tired of everybody here having a connection, a favor, a friend, a family member to continue wrong things. And I'm not going to go into the the part about a commissioner that I raised before, because this is just the election board meeting. But I don't know what it's going to take for this group to make the right decision and start to regain a little bit of respect from the citizens, because this is an absolute failure. And had it not been for Swatara Township and the citizens of Swatara Township and the people who had belonged to that club that were tired of racism and theft, it would have all been swept under the rug, and who knows what year we'd be talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
I'd like to make a point of clarification. Multiple times you use this board, and I just wanted to be clear that I voted to move that precinct, and I found that information from the Swatara Township Commissioners very compelling, and it moved me to bring it up and vote vote in favor of it being moved.
And and we could have this discussion when we had the reconsideration related to that. There's a lot of points in of those discussions. And again, I think those things would be appropriate for the hearing, and we have committed to doing so prior to the end of this year. So we will meet that obligation. So hearing, and is there any additional public participation related to these agenda items on the election board or anything that's been discussed on election board?
I have a question of the solicitor based upon the information just provided above and beyond what was provided before. Are we able to to act on the relocation of a polling place prior to the notification of the residents?
I would not want to provide legal advice in a in a public meeting. We can discuss that.
All right. Could you get that information to me at some point?
Yes.
Soon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At this point, we are going to accept the motion to adjourn the election board.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Preece.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Directors and guests, Mr. Hetrick.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Hetrick with Retirement Collaborative. I'm here to discuss the Dauphin County PA Deferred Compensation Plan. Well, thank you for your time today. Prior to the meeting, you were provided with background information on the motions that we will discuss today. Before getting into the details, I want to provide you with some background on the plan and our relationship to it. The plan is a four fifty-seven B retirement plan for government employees. The plan is a voluntary employee benefit in addition to the employee's main retirement plan, pension plan. The deferred compensation plan is a defined contribution plan, which means that the employee knows what they are contributing, but they don't know how much they will receive. The benefit is based upon their contributions, the investment return, and participants' mortality. In contrast, the pension plan is a defined benefit plan and is designed to provide lifetime income. In these type of plans, the benefit is predetermined based upon a formula that typically uses an employee's age, salaries, and years of service. Employees are required to contribute at least five percent of their pay to the pension plan, and in retirement, pension income will usually be their main source of retirement income. Employers are because of the main source of retirement income, this is a pension, participants in the deferred compensation plan may utilize their account for reasons other than retirement income. When dealing with a 401K plan, which is a typical employer-sponsored retirement plan in the private sector, this type of defined contribution plan typically be the participant's main source of retirement income. Because of this, it's easier to service a 401K plan because there's a high uniformity in the participants' investment objectives. Because the deferred compensation plan is a supplementary supplementary retirement plan, the investment objectives are diverse. There's one participant who's planning on buying a boat when they retire. A few others that will be withdrawing the full amount to relocate to another state. There are others that will retire at fifty-five and want those funds available to pay for health insurance until Medicare. There are others who use it as an emergency reserve in retirement, and still others that will actually use it for retirement income and to supplement their pension. From working with individuals in retirement, I've found that retirees with pensions and social securities tend to have a comfortable retirement if they keep their spending in check. It's great that Dauphin County employees do have pension. I think it's one of the best benefits that you offer to county employees. Because the participants' diverse investment objective, providing investment advisory service is more complicated because you cannot assume that a participant is going to use that money for lifetime income, which is what most service models are designed for. We designed the plan to provide different ways of investing that can be used for both lifetime income through the target date funds or objective-based income through the allocation models. Other than the diverse investment objective, there are a few other components that make the plan unique. Because this is a supplemental retirement plan, participating account balances are generally low compared to 401K plan because the majority of employees' retirement contributions are going towards a pension plan. There is also a large number of employees spread across multiple offices. Some of these offices operate twenty-four hours a day, so when servicing them, you need to be available around the clock, like nine, the nine PM to midnight shift that I worked in open enrollments last night. Lastly, to implement plan changes, it is more complicated than in the private sector. For example, last week I met with a 401K plan, and for the quarterly monitoring meeting, there were some fun changes, and we're adding the I join managed account solution, which I'll be discussing. But after one meeting, we were able to make all the changes. As a voluntary benefit, we work with the Voluntary Employee Benefits Committee, the BEBC, which is composed of employees. The committee oversees the voluntary benefits and provides recommendations to you commissioners. We meet with them quarterly to review the due diligence monitoring for the plan. So so far, to get these changes approved, we have had two group meetings with BBC. And then I followed up with four individual meetings with committee members who were unable to attend the group meetings. Then I've talked with or met with each one of you to go over what the BEBC had voted on. So that's ten meetings in total. So there is a lot that goes into implementing the changes compared to a private sector plan. When servicing the plan, the design philosophy has always been, if we were in the plan, how would we like it to be? In the pre-iPhone era, that meant to it meant going to each one of the offices during open enrollments. I'd have a computer available, review the participants' accounts with them. Most participants didn't have computer access at that time to the accounts and relied only upon quarterly statements. The open enrollment participant meetings would generally take up about six to eight weeks of the year, and throughout the year, we were available for individual group meetings. As technology evolved and more participants were accessing the internet using their smartphones, we developed a planned web portal that provided educational material regarding the plan. The issue we were trying to solve at that time is that employees who didn't have access to work computer couldn't access the internet site to get that educational material. So we developed the planned web portal and designed it so that participants could access it twenty-four hours a day on their computer or phone. When COVID hit, we were ready right away to go to virtual meetings. We created videos to provide education and help with the open enrollment during that period. Since COVID, people in general have become more comfortable with accessing information on their computers and phones and meeting virtually. Last year, the county started to switch to online processing of benefits, and we have assisted HR, Laris, and participants with the switch to online processing. Now, looking at plan design, there's three components that go into the plan design. Investment management, and these are the investments selected for the plan. Third-party plan administration custody, Laris Retirement Access, the third-party administrator, record keeper, and custodian. Investment advisor and participant services. Retirement Collaborative is responsible for this role. We'll be focusing on the investment advisory and participant services today. There are three main roles that we perform. We act as the liaison between HR and Laris to provide a smooth running of the plan. Examples of this would be helping HR set up the system for electronic delivery of employee notices. With the Secure Act, we aided the BEBC with selecting plan amendments to make it easier for participants to get their money out of the plan, and we help HR process the plan document change. And we assist HR with resolving any issues that might come up. On the plan investment side, we create and maintain the investment policy statement, which delineates the process for selecting and monitoring the investment options in the plan. On a quarterly basis, we prepare and monitor reports and meet with the BBC to review the reports. When plan investments changes are approved by the BBC, we prepare reports for the commissioners and meet with them to review the changes and have the information that they need to vote. This may entail in-person meetings with commissioners and being present at the public meetings. Once approved by the commissioners, we work with Laris and HR to implement the changes, and we also have discretionary discretionary management of the plan investment models. On the participant side, we create and maintain the participant web portal that provides educational material, how-tos, and an overview of the plan services. We are available to meet on demand with individuals and groups via phone, web-based meetings, and in-person meetings. During meetings, we'll work with new and old, these are existing participants to assess their long-term investment goals, help create an investment strategy that is appropriate to meet their goals, review the pros and cons of the contribution types, and help the participants select the contribution strategy that's right for the goals. Discuss the pros and cons of plan loans. If a participant decides to take out a loan, we will help them model it and discuss how they can adjust their investment strategy to accommodate the inclusion of the loan. and discuss how they can adjust their investment strategy to accommodate the inclusion of the loan into their investment portfolio. On demand, we provide participants with free wealth management website that they can use to monitor their finances and perform simple retirement planning. For a full financial plan, we offer a discount of $250. Our normal fee starts at 750. For employees leaving employment, we offer free consultations for things such as options of for their vacation sick leave, review the deferred compensation options, pension options, and the risk associated with the different ones, health insurance and life insurance. We provide comprehensive open enrollment services that we've already discussed. On a quarterly basis, we review overall plan fees with the BEBC. We have discussed that if low fees are the most important factor, then the plan should be using only index funds and we should charge or change our service model so that we could lower our advisory fee. The issue is that most of the index funds are currently underperforming. They're actively managed, higher expense ratio appears. And the satisfaction level with that we provide is very high with both HR and employees, so no action was requested. Until recently, our monitoring, we recently updated our monitoring report software, purchased a module that provides advisory benchmarking reports. You have a copy of that report and when running the report, and if we look at all the services that we provide to the plan, we are roughly 0.32% lower than median and 0.19% lower than mean. But when looking on page one of the report that looks at a typical service model, we are 0.04% above the high range. This typical service model doesn't include all the services that we provide and only includes three days of educational service. And we do that at least in one week of the open enrollment meetings. But being a numbers guy, when I see a range like that, I would say, how can we get in there? You know, is it possible without sacrificing the service that we've been providing? So a few things have come together recently that allow us to make this recommendation where we can lower the fees and I think still keep a high quality of service to the plan. Late last year, Alaris added to their platform a managed account solution. It is available on the participant website. Participants can answer some financial questions, enter an outside account information, and the module will compute how they will need to, how much they'll need to save for retirement to produce lifetime income. It's it's a computer-based automated program. It will also design a portfolio for them using the plans or fund lineup and will adjust the portfolio as the participant approaches retirement or if they update their financial information. Participants using the I-Joint Managed Account Solution will receive quarterly reports. The fee for the service is 0.17% and is paid by that participant who likes to use it. In September of last year, TD Ameritrade Institutional finished its merger with Charles Schwab. For individual clients, our firm has used TD Ameritrade as a custodian. We are now using Charles Schwab. Charles Schwab has a brokerage account window called the Personal Choice Retirement Account. This could be added as an investment option to the plan to provide employees with the choice of investing in investments outside of or fund lineup. A participant could also elect to have us manage the PCRA money instead of managing it themselves. And we could use the same trading workflow that we use for individual clients. Participants using this service would receive quarterly reports and access to our client portal. Our fee for this service to the participants who likes to use it would be half a percent plus a $15 quarterly fee. And there is a one-time plan-level fee to set up $500 to set the PCRA for the plan. So that would be more of an in-person type of management managed account solution. This new design will incorporate these two managed account solutions to lower the overall plan fees and allow participants who want additional services to pay for them. To lower the fees, we would no longer discretionary manage the plan models that are made up of funds in the core fund lineup. Instead, the plan would use mutual funds that provide a similar investment strategy. For example, the aggressive growth model, which is made up of different stock investments inside, using the core fund lineup, would be mapped over into the JP Morgan Investor Growth R6 Fund, which is one fund designed for an aggressive growth allocation. And those funds would enter our same due diligence monitoring process that we have for the other funds. The details of the new fund, new allocation funds and the mapping strategy are outlined in the motion. And the reduce, this reduces, this reduces the fees of discretionary managing plan models. For participants who would like to receive investment advice to manage your account, they'd have those two options, a computer-based or do-it-yourself I-Joint Managed Account Solution and the option of using PCRA and hiring Retirement Collaborative to work for them to manage those PCRA funds. These managed account solutions would allow us to reduce the plan-level servicing fee. The issue is that currently, the fee for investment advice to participants and plan, plan models is built on a plan level. We cannot go in and discriminate and say those people who meet with us and, you know, seek advice or are in the plan models are charged a different fee than than anybody else. So this would lower the overall base fee and allow participants who want additional service to have that and pay for it. So looking at how this could be transitioned, there would be two stages. In stage one, the allocation funds that would replace the Dolphin County growth through conservative models would be added in and the allocation funds would replace those models. And the dynamic allocation funds would be added and those would be the ones that would, in stage two, be replace the tactical models. The I-Joint Managed Account Solution would be added to the Alaris participant website. The Charles Schwab Personal Choice Retirement Account brokerage window would be added and Retirement Collaborative would be authorized to link their master account number to participants who elect to use, you know, work with us to manage those funds. People could also use that PCRA just to invest in investments outside of the core fund lineup too. And, you know, if you proceed with that, we'd want to put some limitations on what could be invested in. Typically, it's prudent not to allow penny stocks or inverse exchange traded funds or exchange traded funds that have leverage, like ones that would offer two or three times the S&amp;P 500 index's return. But for most individual stocks and exchange traded funds and outside mutual funds, they could have access to those. And then in stage two, well, in stage one, we'd most likely occur in January, late January or early February. During the first quarter, we would launch an educational campaign to review the new managed account solutions and the allocation funds. For participants in the tactical models, we would reach out to them and go over, because those are a little bit different because we adjust the exposure to high-risk category investments in those. The funds that will be replacing them are very similar to that. But I would still want to reach out to them and, you know, go over the options. So I'd prepare some videos that could be emailed out to them, be available for, you know, meetings with them to discuss their accounts and review their risk profile and decide what would be the best option for them. And, you know, that's available to anybody, but, you know, we would be very proactive with reaching out to them in the first quarter. And then in stage two, the remaining money in the tactical models would be mapped over to the dynamic allocation funds that would be replacing them. And in the second quarter, on April 1st, the new advisory contract with the lower fees and the adjusted services would go with effect. Also included in the motions are some housekeeping items, such as closing the target date funds from 2010, 2020 that do not have any money in them. And there's a money market fund that used to be used for a non-forfeiture account that Alaris says is no longer required. So there's around $13,000 in that, that could be closed and used for plan fees and updating the investment policy statement to reflect any changes that would be made here and adding in the new monitoring criteria. You know, that was listed in the information that was provided. It's very similar to the old one. It's just with the new software. A few things are slightly different with that. And the monitoring score that we come up with is just a way of highlighting funds that might be underperforming, that need to be put on the watch list to have, you know, further due diligence diligence done on them. And if they don't prove, then remove the funds and replace them with other funds like we did in the first quarter. So there is a lot going back. That's
I can't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Try to
Right.
This is something that impacts. How many members of the county?
There's around 800.
800? County has a voluntary employee benefits. Actually, each additions to any voluntary benefits selections will change that occur. Because frankly, the members should have a say approving the changes and going up or down before it's considered. That's something that I think is extremely important to note. So with the impact of 800 employees entering your plan, please change. That's a bad one. I'll do my best.
Yep.
It's based on what I've heard through today. Your change sort of the management side. In an attempt to try to reduce it. And
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You can try to rephrase, say.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
And what I hear is there's going to be three options, you can choose most self-protected option. Utilized, second, second option, it's going to be a PCRA. And then the third option stop, just going to require a lot less. And but opportunity to have some of options because starting state says index funds don't have the performance. They may have over 7 feet, but they don't really be performance of that structure. I love that. And with individuals who see their plans.
I would, I would say at this time, there are times when index funds will be outperforming actively managed funds. And there'll be times when actively managed funds are outperforming that were in that period of time where active management funds are outperforming index funds right now. But there and currently they they are. And if we were just, if we, one, one thing that we did last year is we, okay, okay, yeah, sorry.
Made that in the statement, the index fund usually underperforming versus active.
I said, and I don't think I said, usually I said they are currently, but it my, my, my point is, is that with the, with the index funds, if it, last year, we changed the monitoring criteria because I think index funds should be included in the plan. And if we were just going by trying to keep a fund on the watch list for four quarters.
But
Well, so you, you've got the participants will have several different ways of investing. There's the do-it-yourself, where we've got a really diversified lineup of both index funds and actively managed funds in US stocks, international stocks, bonds, and so on. So somebody who wants to do it themselves, they've got great funds to choose from. There, there are, the guardrails are the funds that are included in the plan right now. If we add the PCRA, the Personal Choice Retirement Account, that would allow them to invest in a brokerage account outside of the core fund lineup. So that would actually open, open up more outside options than what they currently have right now. We also have the because I would like to see it lower, you know, and I would like to see it lower and also have a high-level service. And by, I think the combination of reducing the the work that needs to be done managing the models and the liability that goes in with doing that to the mutual funds, outsourcing the investment management. So if somebody wants to have more discretionary investment advice where they have somebody doing it for them, they can use the computer-based, computer-based model or they could deal with us on a one-on-one personal basis. There would also be part of the educational process. We would develop a program where somebody could go through a risk profile and they could say, okay, if I'm in this risk profile because I have this timeframe and I feel this way about making, losing money, I could be in this allocation fund.
All of that self-corrective sort of assessment. Is there going to be a reduced fee?
Yes. And, and, and that, that's the gist of what, what we're getting at here. By adding in those managed account solutions, we can reduce the fee for the overall plan. And for those people who want that additional service, they can yeah, and they can, they can elect to use that themselves. Right now, there's no way of discriminating and saying somebody who wants those investment model or if they want to meet with us four times a year, you know, they're, they're not you, they're, they're getting the same fee as everybody else where with this, I think it'll provide better options for people who want a higher level service because it's going to be more discretionary. It's going to change as their situation changes automatically. It was unanimous unanimously approved is my understanding. It was very positive. You can reach out to the BEBC members to confirm that. You know, so they're very positive on it and I've worked on the plan for a long time. We've gone through other changes in the past. I will make sure that this continues to be a highlight of the Voluntary Benefits Program of the county and that I think a voluntary benefit, benefit is the key, key word in that phrase. And it should be a benefit to the employees. And when if it's a benefit to the employees, it's a benefit to, you know, for, for everybody. And I will make sure that it continues to stay that way. Well, there's quite a few motions that are listed on the handout that was provided. So what we're looking at.
No, I'll do that. What's, what's and take it up. And if you, yes, yes.
They are listed in the Advisory Service Review Proposal on the last page. Not that one. Be the one that looks, should look like that. Yeah. So, so the, the first motions are adding in those new allocation funds. The second one would be mapping over the models into the new allocation on mutual funds. So the DC aggressive growth through conservative. The next one would be adding in the I-Joint Managed Account Solution. The fourth one would be adding in the Charles Schwab Personal Choice Retirement Account. Number five is the money market fund that I mentioned that is no longer needed. So that could be closed. There is one share in the T-Row Price Midcap Value Fund. I think it's like Yeah. Right. So it was a money market fund that I think it was originally with Alliance Benefit Group. It was a non-forfeiture fund that was used to pay for non-forfeiture expenses. And Alaris said that is I'd have to get back to you on that. That's more the TPA would be involved with that, which is Alaris, but it's no longer needed, you know, at this point. So 13th, yeah, yeah. And okay. Yeah. There is one share in the T-Row Price Midcap Value Fund. It was when we replaced it with another midcap value fund. It was closed to new investors. So we kept one share in case we wanted to move back into it. It's now open to new investors, so it's no reason to hold that. That's $12. There are target date funds from 2010 to actually that should be 2020. We could close those because there's no money in those. A big investment policy statement to reflect the changes to the services and the monitoring score. A big the investment policy statement to reflect uh the changes to the services and the monitoring score. Um, approve our uh advisory agreement uh that would go into place on April first of twenty twenty five. And then in stage two. Which would take place in the second quarter, map those tactical growth models to the modern model, conservative model over into the. Meter dynamic allocation funds.
So we're approving a new agreement that starts April first, twenty twenty five. What are the terms of that agreement?
Um, I'll, I'll, I'll send over a copy for the attorneys to review and for you to review, but it, it's targeting that uh around a twenty five basis point uh fee structure.
Do you know how, how long that agreement is for? How many years?
It's, it, there's no timeframe, you know, so um. You, you know, it, it, all, all our agreements have, have been at will. You know, so either one of us can ter- terminate it within thirty days notice.
I'm gonna have to give this some review only because uh my perspective on all things county related have been to R F P and. Ensure that we've got the best deal. That's nothing personal. It's just simply been my approach to county government and uh ensuring that we have competition. And so. Uh, I do want to thank you for the amount of time. You've clearly put a lot of time and effort into this. And I just want the public to understand that you called for a meeting with each of us individually as well. We had a thirty minute Zoom call where you updated me as well. So I really appreciate your. Efforts to keep me informed uh in this process, and I'll give it a thorough review uh this week. But thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. And I just wanted to note that, you know, I was one who brought forward, you know, this change of the contract to, to lower the fees and, and advisory.
Yeah, there's a, a lot to digest here.
Yep.
Um, a lot of information. You always do come in and provide a ton of information for us to, to uh wade through. So I appreciate that. I appreciate you taking the time to also give me a. A thirty minute, forty five minute Zoom call to update some of this in advance, but there's a lot here.
Yeah.
To look.
And, and I encourage you to uh talk to the V E B C too, you know, if you have questions, you know, I think they could provide a good insight.
I have one question on the. The Alaris part.
Mm hmm.
Could you just briefly go over that again with? Are you saying that we'll move on from a, those that have a Larissa will move on from that or utilize the same structure?
Um, e- everything's going to be the same, you, you know, so it's, it's not going to be that much different than the fund changes that we've approved in the past, you know, from what the participant sees. You know, they're going to see that. Their, the models are going to be replaced with the allocation uh mutual funds. And I'll make sure that uh that education goes well and it's, is done properly. So they understand what's going on and how that's a benefit to them. Um, and then there'll be. An investment option for the PCRA, just like another mutual fund would be, you know, there where they could invest in outside of the core fund lineups. And with that, they could contact us if they wanted um individual management of that particular investment option and PCRA. On the Alaris participant website. That's where they would go through the I join process if they wanted to do, do that manage account solution. So that would be just a module. That would be turned on, that isn't active right now, that would allow that interactivity with that program.
Do you believe that, that there's enough time between now? The next meeting, which we, we definitely need some time to review this uh and then. Be able to present that to the employees and have that. Fall from the timelines of.
Yeah, so. And that, that, the timelines are fluid, you know, there's, there's no. It's not like something needs to be done at a certain point.
This is not tied into open.
It's not tied because, yeah, because open enrollments is.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any other questions.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the most important. They're going to change this made to our employees benefits back. To that. Discuss. It would be equally as important to get voluntary employee benefits feedback. Sir. These things.
Right.
David, how would you forward?
And you, you know, a key thing is, again. This is not that different than a fund change. You, you know, that, that we're going through here. Um, it's not. There's no disruption that a participant would see. Um, there's no blackout period. There would be a thirty day notice of, you know, the fund changes, just like we send out normally. Um, so. You know, I, it, it's not as if a more disruptive thing would be if you were changing a Larissa. Because then there would be a blackout period. You're changing um the way somebody interacts with the plan. Um, you know, there is. It, it, that's a much more involved process. This is more of. A behind the scenes type of, uh, you know, as far as the contract goes, that'd be more of behind the scenes. And.
I, I would expect to get questions from commissioners and administration related to our.
One more pretty quick question, I think. I assume bargaining units are a part of this plan and non bargaining units are a part of this planning are, are, are.
It, it would not be a contractually covered sort of item.
But yeah, that's what I'm saying. So it's, it's not a contractually covered item, but I would assume it's offered to all of our employees, whether they're in a bargaining unit or not.
Even, even part of employees.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions from Mr. Trager? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Human Resources, Tanisha.
Good morning.
Um, I'd just like to request a vote on items twenty one through twenty five of the personnel packet. Item thirty one, thirty seven, thirty eight, and forty six through fifty five.
Are these all prison matters?
All except item thirty one, which is a judicial assistant for the.
Okay, yeah, 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 we're aware of that.
More of that.
Yep. Should we wait till Priest gets back?
No.
Make a motion. Uh, I, I will second that motion. Um, do we have any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Tanisha.
Thank you.
Director of Budget Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out earlier in the week. Um, everything will be ready for approval next week. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions on the purchase order report uh or the investment report for uh Mr. Davis? Anything else you want to add?
Now, I'm currently investigating interest rates. I should have. Where, where we're headed for next week. I'm, I'm waiting on a few phone calls back from a few of our partners, so. Um. Yeah, I'll, I'll update the board as I get complete information.
That's, that's not his day too long. I know you've been extraordinarily busy, but we don't want to miss out on any opportunities.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a Fed cutting interest rates the second time this year. Um. I suppose a lot of, I'll say chaos and confusion um as that wasn't expected. And from one of my phone calls yesterday. They're banking a sixty percent chance on another rate in December, so. Trying to lock people in for long term is prudent challenging, so.
Understood.
Once I get the results, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Davis?
On what he just reported?
Yep.
I just want to expound on that and say what an incredible job did uh this past week. Uh, on the budget hearings and glad we had public participation that was here for the first time that I can ever remember. Livestreamed, a lot of feedback, a lot of questions, and uh I think it was good information. Uh, for the public as well as our newest commissioner come in and participate in that, but you handled it very well. Thank you for the amount of time and effort you put into those budget packets and presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Our chief clerk's report, Mr. Peace.
Commissioners, I have nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Peace? Hearing none, solicitors report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, before I get to the uh board action items, uh, the solicitor's office just learned that there was an appeal file. Uh, so the um certification is not final.
Yeah.
Uh, you would not reopen the election board meeting. There's no action to be taken at this point. Um, I glanced, glanced at the appeal. Uh, I'll need time to read it. And then advise you how we will proceed.
Can you at least give the subject title of the appeal with feeling what?
The decision of the election board on Friday.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
We got one news station here that's covering breaking news. Uh, a- any additional questions for uh Mr. Owens?
On. If no questions on that matter. So there, there are two matters for board action, uh, both of which have been uh reviewed and approved by the solicitor's office for action.
Any questions for Mr. Owens on those two matters? I just have one. Um, the, the number two, uh, what, what do we have a term or a length of term for that renewal?
So the rates are guaranteed for two years. Um, for that renewal, but the county can exercise a thirty day out at any time.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion. I'm sorry, training packet. Uh, I believe we require a vote. Um, items one through five in the training packet today uh require votes. Um, do I have a motion to uh entertain items one through five in the training packet?
So my second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Now we will move to matters requiring board action. Uh, matters one and two today on uh the workshop meeting. Um, are prepared and ready for action. Do we have a motion uh for one and two?
I'll make a blanket motion for items one and two.
Motion has been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I would say is uh, as my colleague, Commissioner Hartwick. Seem to state just the uh, in the interest of this being a thirty day out. Uh, I would prefer with R F P these services and ensure we're getting the best deal for the taxpayers.
And, and I think the um, the process would be also, and we talked about even R F being the broker.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, actually, that's what I mean. R F being the broker and then allowing the broker to solicit the best services.
And, and I think that can occur immediately as far as I'm, I'm, I'm understanding.
Yeah, we'll begin work on that immediately.
Understood.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion?
I concur.
Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Former business. Commissioners comments, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah.
As promised, uh, I want to provide the public an update on my ongoing review of the Hershey-Harrisburg documents. I want to first thank V H H for their continued cooperation in providing records for my review. While I'm not yet ready to present a comprehensive summary of my findings. I do need to draw attention to a particular contract that has raised significant concerns for myself. The contract in question is with Community Networking Resources specifically involving Michael Musser. When I met with V H H's former executive director, I asked about the purpose of this contract. She explained that it was intended to serve as a liaison to the county. Tasked with securing additional tourism funds. V H H by mandate. Already receives a designated portion of hu- hotel tax revenues. However, this contract reveals their efforts to secure additional discretionary funds managed by the commissioners through tourism grants. What troubles me is why this task. Uh, needed to be outsourced at all. Why couldn't V H H's president and CEO handle this responsibility? It seems like a core part of their role. Why was it deemed necessary to bring in an external consultant for something that falls squarely within the president's purview? I won't get into Mr. Musser's background today, but I find it both notable and concerning that he's never reached out to me. As someone supposedly hired to be the liaison for V H H, it's shocking that he's never asked for a meeting. Introduced himself or made any effort to communicate with me. Just to be clear, I've been elected for over a year and I've been serving in this role for nearly eleven months. His job is to secure and maintain funding, funding that falls directly under the commissioner's authority. You'd think building a relationship with the new commissioner would be a top priority. That has not happened. Now let's talk about how this contract works. This is the contract. Let's talk about how it works. It's a commission based deal. Meaning Community Networking Resources run by Michael Musser gets paid a percentage of the tourism grant money they secure for V H H. And. To make it just crystal clear. Cause you know I like props. The interesting thing about this contract is. The steps in the contract. Uh. The contract is signed twenty fifteen. And it's funded in steps. So the contract sets the compensation tiers based on the total tourism grant dollars secured. Where it began, four hundred thousand dollars in grants being secured, Community Networking Resources run by Michael Musser earned three thousand per month, thirty six thousand annually. The next tier. Is eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh. And wouldn't you know it. Just months after the contract was signed here. In the summer of twenty fifteen. Just months after. It hits eight hundred. For six K a month. A total. Of um seventy two thousand dollars annually. The Board of Commissioners was the one. Who hit that number exactly, which was the number that was exactly in the contract. So the step increases reflected in the contract. The Board of Commissioners hit to the penny. An independent contract by somebody external from the county, like not, not connected to the county, V H H's independent consultant. We hit their contract exactly that step. But that's just random. It just must have accidentally happened that way. Well, on January twenty fourth, twenty seventeen, thirteen months later. The commissioners approved one million in funding to V H H. Once again, the exact contractual threshold. Was hit. By the commissioners, increasing Community Networking Resources run by Michael Musser's fee. To seventy five hundred per month. Or ninety thousand annually. How is it possible? That the Board of Commissioners matched these funding thresholds to the penny every time? Or, and just to be fair. Maybe he's just that good at his job. As a consultant. Or the system is maybe rigged. Because let's be real, this looks really bad. Since twenty twelve, Community Networking Resources run by Michael Musser has made this much. From the arrangement. For the record. Uh, eight hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred dollars from this arrangement. In my view, nearly nine hundred thousand dollars commission, representing a complete unnecessary drain on tourism money. Like. This is an unnecessary fee that we're paying on our own money. As we send it to. A group that we are adjacent with, that we determine them as the tourism board. And it gets worse. The contract termination terms. Are absurd. It states that the agreement will only end in the year that V H H no longer receives any funding as a result of the con- consultant services. There is no standard thirty day, sixty day, ninety day termination clause. This effectively locks V H H into the arrangement for potentially a year following the removal of payments, making it nearly impossible to exit without significant disruption. V H H leadership, this is really important. V H H leadership. Didn't even have their solicitor review the contract before signing it. Probably because any competent solicitor would have taken one look at it and said, absolutely not. On the commissioner's side, we went a step further. With the one million in funding. We created memorandums of understanding. They were crafted to protect V H H's additional funding. Ensuring this arrangement remained even more protected. So. In legislative meeting, January ten, twenty eighteen. We have a contract or a memorandum of understanding, to be fair. Where we commit in fiscal year twenty eighteen to at least one million dollars of funding for V H H. Again, this is funding on top of the funding they already receive as mandated under the hotel tax. We also say in fiscal year twenty nineteen, we will. Uh, give one mil- at least one million dollars. In fiscal year twenty twenty, we will also give at least one million dollars. This is a three year memorandum of understanding. Now that ended in twenty twenty, so. Leadership meeting, ten, seven, twenty twenty. We did another memorandum of understanding, not another three year agreement. This one's a five year agreement. Will designate in fiscal year twenty twenty one, at least one million. In fiscal year twenty twenty two, at least one million. In fiscal year twenty twenty three. in fiscal year twenty twenty three, at least one million, in fiscal year twenty twenty four, at least one million. And we are on the hook for next year in fiscal year twenty twenty five, at least one million. Again, ninety thousand dollars of each of these one million dollar payments is effectively taxed. I mean, I don't have another way of saying it other than just compensation fee that I can't make a whole lot of sense of. But there's more. This represents all the contracts that we have with Community Networking Resources and Michael Musser in other places, not just V H H. By the way, this is just the ones I've had that I, that I've found, because I'm almost certain there's got to be more. Could be wrong. But let's talk about how May eighteenth, or sorry, May fifteenth, two thousand and eight, the gaming act contract consultant for gaming through our industrial development authority. It's five thousand a month. Doing the math, at five thousand a month, at what, based on just the math of the start of the contract to now, assuming there's never been any disruptions in the contract, which by the way, it's an auto renew, so I doubt there's any disruptions ever in the contract. That'd be a hundred and ninety-eight months, that would be nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Economic Development, E D C, Home Program or Dauphin County Housing and Rehabilitation Program, on December seventh, twenty twelve, started an agreement. There's multiple addendums and amendments, uh, but I'll, I'll just say this, the compensation structure is five thousand five hundred dollars for each project less than thirty thousand dollars, seven thousand five hundred dollars for each project more than thirty thousand dollars. I've not yet got to the compensation made since twenty twelve, because obviously, as you can just tell from reading, it's going to depend on projects, how many projects within a year, and the nature of those projects when it comes to cost. But yet again, it is another auto-renew contract. Redevelopment Authority, Whole Homes Repair Program, August tenth, twenty twenty-three, same in compensation structure, five thousand five hundred dollars for any project under thirty thousand dollars, seven thousand five hundred dollars for any project over thirty thousand dollars. Continues until the funds are exhausted or it's an auto-renew. So assuming funds remain in this particular Whole Homes Repair Program or that funds come back, it will continue to be renewed. Now, just to be fair, these auto-renew contracts, most of them have thirty day outs at least that are with the county or its boards. Uh, they have pretty, they have provisions to get out, but it takes action in order to get out, there is no expiring of the contract. A contract with Dauphin County, with this floor, the fourth floor, it literally says Office of the County Commissioners, fourth floor. August first, twenty twenty-two, five thousand dollars a month, it's an annual auto-renew contract for the opioid remediation grant program, to run the opioid remediation grant program. Our opioid monies are managed by this as well. And to be fair, just, I want to be a hundred percent clear, because I never want to misrepresent anything. This contract isn't Community Networking Resources specifically, but it's under their rebrand McNeese Strategic Solutions Group. Uh, and it's, as far as I can tell, all the same staff, all the same individuals for our opioid money. Here's where it gets just unbearable. At this point, it's already unbearable, but this just, I, I can't make heads or tails of this one. The Redevelopment Authority, September first, twenty nineteen, decided they wanted a state hospital grounds consultant. Uh, meaning they were trying to, if you're aware of the state hospital grounds, redevelop that particular property and decided to hire somebody to do that, and they hired uh this particular entity, Community Networking Resources. Annual auto-renew, three thousand dollars a month, from what I can tell, sixty-two months, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. All it takes is a simple Google search to show that the last few years, this is a completely unnecessary contract. Because at the end of twenty twenty-one, it was pretty clear, we were not going to be redeveloping the state hospital grounds. It's public, you can go Google it. We lost the opportunity to redevelop that. Am I wrong? I'm, I'm not wrong, like, this is public information, that, that we wanted to redevelop that, we were not able to redevelop that. So that's bad, that it just kept going. What's even worse is that as I browsed redevelopment authority minutes, March ninth, twenty twenty-three, they decided to make a vote to continue this contract, which is just beside me because it didn't need a vote, it was on an annual auto-renew, but they reaffirmed the contract, March ninth, twenty twenty-three. And here's where it gets good. The contract was reaffirmed, who made the motion? Who on the R D A made the motion? Former Commissioner Heist, I mean, haste, sorry. That's what I feel like, guys, that's, that's where I'm at, because this is a heist. This is taxpayer dollars, and here's what I'm going to say, I just want to make this very clear, because here's what I say every time I, every time I say it's taxpayers' dollars, here's what people tell me, Justin, it's not. Well, here's the deal, when your family comes in town to stay here, they pay a six percent tax on their hotel. And that's supposed to go back into our community, it's supposed to go back into reinvestment here so that tourists come here, so that businesses here grow and pay more property tax. So it does affect our property taxes when millions of dollars go other places. It does, whether it's a hotel tax, a gaming tax, and even all this talk about federal dollars and state dollars, those are still our dollars. Let me be clear, I just participated in three days of budget hearings. I sat in executive session discussing our budget shortfalls yesterday. I've seen heated debates over amounts of smallest forty-one thousand dollars. Meanwhile, we've allowed what I consider millions in wasteful spending to flow out of this county through contracts like this. We're facing a budget crisis largely due to decades of mismanagement, from what I can tell. While I am a progressive, and I'll, I'll wear that badge, I believe in providing better services to our residents, services that may require a tax increase, I refuse to place the burden of our fiscal irresponsibility on the backs of taxpayers while special interests continue to siphon funds unchecked. To those who've profited from these contracts, it's time to get out. Your time is up. I will continue uncovering and addressing these abuses because this is personal. You've taken from the people of this county funds that were meant to serve their interests. The heist is over. I will keep naming names, I will keep exposing the waste, because this is not just about dollars and cents, it's about integrity, accountability, and ensuring that every dollar we spend serves the people of Dauphin County, thank you.
Finished, Mr. Mr. Priest?
I want to uh take a moment and announce that we have uh through Friday from eight-thirty to three-thirty uh free to residents in Dauphin County at our Solid Waste and Recycling Office. Uh, eight tires per resident. You can drop off and we are partnering with the N double A C P on this event. I want to thank them for, again, partnering with us and Kelly Wolf and her team out at Solid Waste and Recycling. Uh, following up Commissioner Douglas's comments are pretty heated, uh, pretty charged, and uh I think he uh again brings out some topics that, that need to be further looked into. And uh, I believe uh that uh that's already taking place and we will uh see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest, Commissioner Douglas. Um, first, uh, just, just to respond, uh, you know, the idea of identification is key, but moving forward, I think we have some opportunities to exercise eliminations of contracts and ways that we can manage, much, much better manage some of these issues uh more immediately. And I think, you know, the idea of having a public discussion is important. And I also think it's important for us to be able to look at the action that's going to be required, because as we get through this budget process, uh, it's, it's really important that we do examine every option. And again, we, we could talk about federal, state, other dollars. Um, we're always looking for ways to minimize the impact on our county property taxpayers. Um, and we talked about it today in the Sun Life discussion, talked about in an RFP process, and we are talking about it with, you know, looking at uh creative ways to move in other dollars outside of the general fund to minimize impacts on county taxpayers as it relates to funding government services. And I agree with you, we have a responsibility and a process to continue to try to provide better service in a way that effectively directs uh the resources to where they belong. So they, ultimately, that's something that we've talked about now for quite some time. I know we've been bringing this since November with boards and commissions and figuring out a way to ensure that we've got separation and there is zero opportunity to leverage resources or misuse resources based upon the way that we can restructure this to ensure the public good is, is ultimately going to be the first priority. So that's number one, and, and I will tell you that that is something that we, we have got to act on. And I think there's some contracts that we talked about before the end of this year that require based upon those identifications that that level of action. Um, number two, I just want to thank our um uh area agency on aging, uh, executive director, um, who has uh also examined and, and, and managed a transition. We've had a longtime executive director in aging, um, that, you know, that we have identified some, a couple of challenges uh related to the oversight of um the Department of Aging Protective Service Unit, which has been something that is one of the most critical and important jobs in county government is to protect our seniors. Uh, and the ability to do so, uh, we have had some staffing concerns and, and we've also lacked the fiscal director for about a last year and a half. Um, under the leadership of recent director Ben Knox, he has really allowed us to fill a number of vacancies and has placed us into a position to have uh a much higher level of compliance and, and the protection of our seniors uh is a, uh, extraordinarily important, um, both along with the protection of our children or protection of our seniors, critical priorities as it relates to county government. But uh, I know we have put forth challenges in many ways, I just want to read a quick letter from the Department of Aging Secretary. Um, that, and it's entitled to Director Knox, uh, from Secretary Jason Cavulic. He wants to thank you for his exceptional professionalism, commitment to the practice and efforts to improve the work of our agency. As public servants, we are all challenged in the best and worst of times. While days like these feel like our worst, they push us to strive to better meet the needs of those we serve. Your efforts and comments reflect your dedication to continuously enhance the quality of our work. Uh, I want to take this opportunity to reflect on the improvements your department and your teams have made and to focus on the improvements we continue to work on as we move forward. Celebrating achievements is important for us to keep our enthusiasm to the next goal because there is always more to do. Uh, remember one of his favorite quotes from Winston Churchill, to improve is to change, to perfect is to change often. So I just wanted to um make sure that Ben had gotten the appropriate level of recognition and that the staff uh were continuing to work uh in order to make positive changes in the protection of our seniors uh in Dauphin County. So with that, I'd like to open up um the mic to public comment.
Tom Conley, three forty-five North Harrisburg Streets, Swatara Township. I want to start with uh after my comment, uh, the election board meeting. Um, I, I appreciate the, the comment made by Commissioner Douglas. Um, Commissioner Hartwick said it will be looked at by the end of the year. And um Commissioner Priest asking, you know, where we're at in the process. So I feel confident that even though we shouldn't um be having the conversation um this deep into the year, uh, I understood not moving in for the primary, but the general election, I, I think there'll, there'll be some explaining to do. But um, on, on the, the subjects that Commissioner Douglas spoke about, um, not the first time I've heard these things, um, I've spoken about them in the past, but uh certainly didn't have access to the, to those numbers and things on the inside, but Swatara Township is a tourist area. We have hotels uh in the township on Eisenhower Boulevard, Techport, um, o- other places, uh, probably uh based on population and land area, we probably have more hotels than, than anybody. And it is ironic that I've raised this subject for years, even as a citizen before I was elected official, that what's missing from the hotel tax, which went from two percent to three percent to five percent, what's missing is what every other community has, a carve-out for public safety. And I think we just heard where the carve-out went. So we have crimes that happen in the hotels. Uh, we have human trafficking, prostitution, drugs, we've had violent offenses. Swatara Township and the municipalities that have the hotels then use their property tax and other resources to police those hotels. Because the partner we have in Dauphin County and the Visitors Bureau gives zero dollars for public safety. So I think based on what we heard, the normal twenty to thirty percent carve-out for public safety. Because what stops people from traveling and, and tourist areas is crime, they want to feel safe. So that burden was put on the citizens of Dauphin County while somebody, and I'm, I'm going to be, be uh a, a little more forceful in my language, while somebody helped themselves to what sounds like a theft of funds that was approved by elected officials. Nobody came in here like the other example where the guy came in at night a hundred and ninety-one times and took cash and left. But somebody got to somebody here, and when I was in the back, and I'm not going to say names, but I Googled that name, Mike Musser, and ironically, he has made contributions and received money from elected officials in this county. So you got to know who he is. Uh, I will add this to, to, to the Mike Musser situation. Um, when I went for a gaming grant, I was given a card with his name on it to contact him if I had any questions. And, and ironically, I was going to speak about this regardless of what anybody said today, that's, that's what I referred to. Um, in Swatara Township, uh, we're, we're dealing with a uh infrastructure bank. And, and this is, this is very timely as of today. Um, I was a commissioner for eight years and we borrowed twenty million dollars at a very good rate to do infrastructure projects. And one of the projects that was on that list is Rupp Hill. And ironically, when I was out of office, um, there seems to be a deal with the D C I B. And ironically, it says, following Dawwood, which is Township Engineers, conversation with the county and their consultant, their consultant, there's recommendations that we withdraw from other grant processes and that we borrow money from this entity that this person's involved in, money that we already have in the bank at a low interest for the project. There, there's some, there's some carve-outs in the project. The project has to be engineered by a company called H R G. Dawwood already did the engineering. So there's a conversation which I have here that, that involves multiple people at the township in Dawwood. And then it goes right to a person who goes by Mus, M U S S, Michael Mus- Musser. He reaches out to the township manager to ask uh to, to find out about questions, and then he immediately adds Jeff Haste to the email. This is in twenty twenty-three on a loan that's active right now in twenty twenty-four. So Jeff Haste is added to the email along with other people, and then it immediately goes to uh everyone else is taken off the email, Dawwood, who has, who has already engineered the project and township officials, with the exception of one who's no longer with the township. And wouldn't you know that this Michael Mus- Musser says, give me a call. No, no more emails going back and forth, but he, he takes off George Connor, he takes off Jeff Haste, and he takes off H R G. And ironically, uh, Commissioner Steele was in the back of the room, myself, we oversee the, the Finance Committee at Swatara Township. And for the life of us, we couldn't figure out why somebody would borrow money and why the county would want somebody to borrow money. So I'm going to say, add that to your list to look at. I find it very hard to believe that there's not fees or anything like that, because it's extremely generous to come to Swatara Township when you won't give us a police officer at a hotel. Years and years of hotel tax, you gave the money to Mike Musser. Now we have a roadway project and the same guy listed in official emails, which can be right to note, as the consultant. So um, if this goes on beyond your next meeting, if that person, Michael Musser oversees gaming this year and hands out money, there's a problem. If he oversees anything on the Board of Assessment Appeals, if he gets one more cent beyond the next meeting, whatever, whatever millions you're giving to him today, whatever the perks are, I guess he got, that can be investigated. But I'm going to recommend strongly that it is But I'm going to recommend strongly that it is not investigated by the Dolphin County District Attorney. And I would go one step further. Hearing about this blatant just reaching into the the pool of public money and taking it at will sounds very much like the person who was discharged with a hundred and ninety-one counts because he actually took cash. I think this needs to go to the Department of Justice, skip the Dolphin County District Attorney. Please, please, because I'm almost afraid that we might find out campaign money has flown in different directions that could involve all the county rogue offices where this person received money and gave money to 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 the people to be elected in those positions. But let's skip the Attorney General's Office too, because we've had enough time for people to look into these things. Kudos to Commissioner Douglas for for bringing up things from the past. But let's find out what's going on right now. Stop it today. When you come into the next meeting, hey, you're going to do call to order, you're going to do moment of silence. But when you get into the meat of the thing, let us know how much money this person has taken, how much you plan to get back for the taxpayers, how much money you plan to then put into public safety for our citizens, tourism, and 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 people traveling through the community. And give us some confidence that we don't feel like there's only a few people involved here. And that's really what it sounds like. There's only a few people involved here. I spoke a few weeks ago about a fourth commissioner, haste. I haven't attended all the meetings and I haven't a chance to see everyone. I won't watch that, but I realize a positive step was taken to correct that situation. But let's make sure people aren't slipping through the cracks. And I'll go back to the same situation that we had in this building and and people here were involved in. There was a problem in the carcass ports and somebody was charged something they shouldn't have been charged. It came out to be incompetence, a mistake, dereliction of duty, whatever the words were. But someone was held responsible. A person lost a job and then had to pay money back. Let's start getting rid of people and have them pay the money back. Thank you, and I think you guys can get this done.
Mr. Conley, if those if those emails are public or rights noble, I'd appreciate if I could get a copy of that thread.
Morning. Terrence Webb, Harrisburg, nineteen twenty-seven, Gary Street, Harrisburg, lifelong resident of Harrisburg. I just want to make a statement. I come to these meetings periodically, and this is nothing new for me. And it's always been a question for me. I know you personally, Mr. Hartwick, and I've I've spoken with you directly about the issue of misappropriation of funds and all kinds of nefarious things that go on within these bodies. This is unacceptable. One of the things that I find extremely unacceptable is you're passing on the issue of racism happening in our community, that you would just sit and say, well, I'm going to chair this to the next time. This is not the first time I've heard you say this. I've heard you say this before. This is problematic for me as a citizen. I have children that are coming up in this. This is a historic issue for us, black people in this community, and that you take this in such a light kind of indifference, sadness. I have an issue right now. My daughter is being harassed by Dolphin County Domestic Relations. It was brought to your attention directly. It was brought to Commissioner Douglas's commission, uh, attention directly. This is something that normally black people have no means to deal with. But I want to make you and put you on notice that we're tired of it. We're organizing and we intend to do something about this. You've been sitting in that seat for a while, Mr. Hartwick. And as I said, you and I've had many conversations about this community in terms of Dolphin County Prison being owned by, uh, the land being owned by Jeanne Turgeon and then sentencing black people to to that prison. This is just something that goes beyond the pale. And for you to sit there as if you're righteous in your behavior is further sad. At some point, accountability will be had, and I'll be sitting there.
Mr. Webb, I'm always willing to have this discussion with you and show a level of action. I I normally don't engage and respond, but you raised a couple of allegations to me that are important to respond to. Number one, the idea of racism is not, in my opinion, the issue that existed here as it related to access to the polling places. We had a hearing that existed, and then we're going to have a future here. The idea of we had zero complaints or zero concerns from any resident that were brought forward related to those issues in in an election process. There is no doubt we are willing to examine this again, but to try to change things during a national election without any kind of voters being moving forward or any history of any kind of complaints were extraordinarily difficult to change and to move a polling place. I believe that in the future, we can make those kinds of changes. Those, the allegations that exist in polling places can be really charged. And there is no tolerance for racism. I'm telling you straight up, that does not exist. Trying to turn any discussion about this into racism is really, in my opinion, a slippery slope. And again, I I probably shouldn't comment, but I I will, because it's important to me. It's very important to me to not sit up here. I'm not trying to be in sort of some level of judgment. I will tell you that if we have locations that are at temples and mosques, and if somebody were to make an allegation that is not substantiated at any related to either side of these, we rent a building for a polling place. We do not stand here and put a stake into political purposes. If there are options during other elections, we will examine those options and move them in a place that I believe will be safe to the entire community. Those are schools. I'm going to tell you that my position has been, if there were formal complaints that were brought forward, there would not have been a need to have this discussion. Those, that polling place would have been changed. The problem was, as it related to an election process in a vacant building, there was still, even in this election, not one complaint related to harassment, intimidation, or racism. And and I will tell you, if I had one formalized complaint related to those issues on an election process, this would have been a non-negotiable.
So really quickly, just, I just for the record, you're telling me this is the first time you've heard this?
Oh, no, it's not the first time I've heard it, but there's a issue that's existing that is being translated into an election process that, at least from a national election perspective, there was not an issue with the polling place.
Okay, okay, so just lastly, and I'm going to, um, thank you very much for your time. The Civil War Museum receives monies from the county, has been receiving money from the county for years, monies that should have gone to the city. We have not been considered in that process, and you've been put on notice about that several times. I spoke to you about that.
Civil War has been reduced in allocations, and the city does have a direct payment of tourism monies.
That money specifically.
I I don't know what the current allotment of the city is, the Civil War Museum, but that's something that we can examine it. It's something that, quite frankly, I know has gone down significantly over the course of time and is almost to nothing. As a matter of fact, we've had some discussions about this from a board's perspective related to our decisions this year in in those regards.
I think my comments echoed former Mayor Papenfuss, who I have not had the pleasure of having a conversation about. But I believe his quote was something to the effect of, "The Civil War Museum is a monument to corruption," end quote. And I do want to say this, your daughter with with DRO, I just want to, I want I want the public to know this.
And we've responded well, looking in that matter.
Yes, yes, and we have, we've we've looked into it in my office. I've oversited DRO, but I just want to make it clear, just because I have oversight of something does not mean like oversight in the sense of the ability to step in and direct people. And I think that's the challenge of 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 the term oversight. The assumption is that, you know, the buck stops with you, but it doesn't. And they're they're an independent entity more more so ran by the courts. Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Hartwick. But I've expressed my displeasure with the way in which your daughter's case is being handled. And 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 unfortunately, beyond that, they're bound by the courts. And so I I I I would just want to express that, that I'm frustrated for you. And I don't know what else I can do or this board can do on your behalf.
Because I am a person and, sorry, personally, I don't lay down easily. So I come to these kinds of situations and 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 present an issue. But there are a lot of people in this community who don't have that kind of constitution, who don't have that kind of strength of character, says, I'm not going to take this. There's a lot of rampant abuse in domestic relations. I sit back and don't do anything about this, and when people complain about it, you kind of brush them off. This is unacceptable, and I swear for God, I'm not going to stop. Not just because it's my daughter specifically, which makes it really, but because it's not right for this community. You guys have been sitting in these seats for too long doing the same crap.
Domestic relations is one that we should continue to have discussions about. And also, I think an audience with the the courts is an appropriate level of discussion as well.
I'm I'm asking for this body's assistance in that.
You you will have.
I do also just want to make it clear that my office has given, I I would, I would guess an audit with my executive assistant to to confirm, but we've probably spent fifty to a hundred hours on domestic relations items alone, whether that's reviewing, emailing, crafting responses. Ultimately, we're not, it's just an, it's just like a letter of recommendation. It's not, you know, anything that we can enact or do. And so we we receive every constituent complaint related to DRO, and we give it the time and energy it deserves. We reach out to the constituent, we make contact with the constituent. But as frustrated as the constituents are, I think we're equally frustrated in our inability to change what does seem to be a system. So, yeah.
Shane Steele, six thirteen Barber Drive. Chairman, Commissioners, those of the public, join us online, those in the audience. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to come before you. I want to touch on a few items, but first I want to touch on is the first word voting precinct, where there was a complaint levied. So your comment that there wasn't a complaint levied, there was, and that complaint was levied. And I'm a voter, I'm a taxpayer in Swatara Township. So that complaint was levied on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And it was through email, and it was to the chairman of the board, Mr. Priest, and Mr. Douglas, and then Mr. Speck. And it was copied to the president of the board, a commissioner, the manager at the time of Swatara Township, the fire chief, and also the police chief. And I stated in that email as such, "Hello, Dolphin County Commissioners and Director Speckman. On May tenth, nineteen sixty-seven, Martin Luther King Junior gave a speech to the Hungry Club Forum addressing the evils of racism, poverty, and the Vietnam War. The latter ended in nineteen seventy-five. According to The Atlantic, the Hungry Club began as a secret initiative of the Butler Street YMCA in Atlanta. It was a place where sympathetic white politicians could meet out of the public eye in local black leaders who were excluded from many of the city's civic organizations. It is regretful that fifty-seven years after this speech, the country, the state, the county, and the township are still plagued with what King described as the evils of racism. Similarly, it is disheartening that an organization that is viewed as the custodial of public trust, health and safety, and overall well-being of the emergency response to the citizens of Swatara Township would engage and maintain practices, policies, and customs to discriminate against people of color. On Saturday, May twenty-fifth, I I visited a memorial ceremony at the Midland Cemetery in Swatara Township. The history of Midland is that is final resting place for slaves, former slaves, men of the United States Color Troop, Buffalo Soldiers, and numerous leaders of the area's African-American community. There are numerous black families of Oberlin and Hawk Russell that fought and died for their country buried there. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that my family has a rich history in Swatara Township. Midland Cemetery is where my great-great-great-grandparents are buried, the genesis of my ancestors in America. There are locations like Midland across this country where people of color paid the ultimate sacrifice and gave up their lives for the rights and freedoms we all enjoy, including the right of suffrage. Equally important is the right to suffrage at polling locations that are unaccompanied by the evils of racism. Now here comes the complaint. As you are aware, the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners on May first, twenty twenty-four, removed the Friendship Fire Company of Bressler as an emergency provider attributed to their non-compliance of the twenty twenty-two recommendations by the PA State Attorney General's Office and the Swatara Township Board of Commissioners and subsequent reports of racial discrimination by the department's members, residents, and business owners of Swatara Township after an investigation in twenty twenty-four. I said, I believe enforcing people of color to vote at the Friendship Fire Company of Bressler would be insufferable to where we have come with race relations as a county, as a country, as a state, and as a township. As we know too well, election turnouts fluctuate based upon competitiveness and voter interests. However, if the Friendship Fire Company of Bressler was to remain a county polling location, I fear it would have very low voter turnout and the profound effect on the daily life of our community. It is for these reasons I respectfully request the polling location of the Friendship Fire Company of Bressler be relocated. And I signed, signed it by Shane Steele, Vice President, Swatara Township Board of Commissioners. It's troubling to me also that less than a month ago, I spoke here about a criminal an organization that operates with county-elected officials, and some probably don't even know that they're involved at the lower levels of employment. But I think Commissioner Douglas hit the nail on the head when he begins to bring out these contracts, but it's just not at the county. I think as you spread yourself through other municipalities throughout this county, you're going to realize that some individuals have their hand in the cookie jar and they got crumbs on their shirts. So we know who they are, right? And the sad part is, if you look at it over the last twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, look at these municipalities and guess what they have? Deficits in their budgets. Imagine if that money wasn't being robbed from the cookie jar. What resources these local municipalities would would be able to provide? But we can't. Another striking thing is that name that you brought up, Mus, Musser, whatever his name may be, before being elected as a a a public official in Swatara Township, that name is rampant through the county, selling elected officials their houses, giving elected officials wives, jobs, funding campaigns. So so listen, here's what happens. You funnel the money through a contractor, and then that contractor then make campaign contributions to make sure you win the seats, whether it be a school district, whether it be a county, whether it be a local municipality. It's troubling that, I was watching a video of a a meeting in Allentown, and the reach is the whole way to Allentown, Offensive Avenue. This is a criminal organization, and you have just now caught the snake in your tracks. But the problem is, you haven't got to the head of the snake yet. Mr. Douglas, I commend you for what you're doing. Continue what you're doing, find it, find the head of the snake and chop his damn head off. Appreciate you, Commissioners, thank you.
The Commissioners, owner of the society, Swatara Township. I want to talk about a few things. The first thing I want to talk about is the explosive details we have heard today from Justin Douglas. And like I often do, I sat back here and I Googled the name that I heard, Mi- Michael Musser. And the first thing that came up was an article about a local petter ass that turns out to be, I think, his flock. The second article I found was from twenty eleven. And it's, I'm trying to pull it up right now, but I just lost signal. But it essentially says that Michael Musser is running political campaigns for the commissioners and like he runs the commissioners and that the county is a well-oiled machine, a well-oiled machine of money for my, that Michael Musser controls. It's literally a full article, twenty eleven. So none of this stuff is new, it turns out. This corruption has been going on, like Justin said, for a long time. So I continued reading the article because some of the names I heard today look familiar because I've been doing a lot of of deep diving into people's campaign finance. And one of the things I noticed is Michael Musser donates to campaigns, like a lot of money. Um, but Michael Musser also like is part of McNeese's strategy, which has their own pack. You know who else has their own pack that donates a ton of money to campaigns is HRG? No wonder they're getting Prime Care, HRG, all these vendors for the county and a lot of local municipalities are huge campaign donors. Actually, some of the biggest donors to some local campaigns of people sitting right up here. So we're accepting huge donations to get our jobs, to keep our jobs, right? That pay us four hundred ninety thousand dollars over four years. That's about a million dollars over two terms, right? So it feels like there's another grift happening when the grifters who are siphoning money off of our county on the outside are getting on the inside by donating. off of our county on the outside are getting on the inside by donating significant amount of money to campaigns. Now, it might not be illegal, right? But it's certainly improper. These are vendors, and a lot of time vendors that I hear you guys, Benetton, um DevNet. Like I, these names weren't new to me because I hear you defending why we didn't art people's contracts, right? So um it's 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 showing a pattern of pay for play. And this article from twenty eleven in Penn Live laid out the pay for play. And in in the article, it mentions that Musser is your friend, uh Commissioner Hartwick and former treasurer of steel, but it mentions that he's your friend. So I am not throwing the accusation, Penn Live in twenty eleven threw the accusation, but it is very curious to me why someone you are so close with is getting all of this money from the county. Under what purposes is the, like, what is this doing for us? Like, I I the understanding of how is it helping us to only use HRG? How is it helping us to to um to pay Michael Mus all this money, right? I I don't know how that's that's improving my life in any way, right? So it's it's really uh when I hear you talking about taxpayer savings and the money fee saving, and then the next thing I hear is that we are paying a firehouse to be a polling station that has been credibly accused of racism. Okay, and the county money, that's taxpayer dollars, is going to a racist firehouse because what you are saying is you didn't hear that when voting was happening that racism was a problem. And I just want everyone to know what what he's saying, because what he's saying is it could be a Klan meeting house. And as long as no one reports that on Election Day, there was a case of racism, he thinks it's okay to pay money to that institution when there is a community school down the street. And 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 so that's what we are hearing. So when when you're and you're trying to explain away racism, like I literally heard you just try to uh it's like, take yourself out of anything that could look like racism, and you can look at me like that right now all you want. But you didn't. All you're doing is showing you're willing to accept it and make excuses for it so that it can carry on. And it makes me wonder what ties you might have to that club because you have ties to a lot of the stuff going on around here. And people of Dolphin County deserve deserve people sitting up there who, even if people donate to your campaign, are willing to do something about it if they're siphoning money. Don't care who you take money from. I care if you're giving our money back to them for no benefit for the people. And it seems that that's what we're seeing right now. And you can continue to say that you don't talk back and you just try to listen. We all know that's not true. Okay, and people can see it because they stream that now. So it's 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 there needs to be an investigation, and there needs to be an investigation of everyone up here because the money, and it needs to be done like this is crime. So crime lawyers get involved because you can think it's ethical, you can think whatever you want, but at the end of the day, uh who's paying you to be here, and they're getting paid back in multitudes. While we are all struggling and you're telling us, you're telling us, you've got to cut this, you've got to cut that. I listened to the budget hearing. Cut, cut, cut. You're fighting with the partners to cut. And then you're shoveling money to your friends out the door. I don't forget, just a few weeks ago, we heard about you canceling contracts. I'm wondering who the people were who you were signing the new contracts for when you were firing other people. Because it feels like you probably knew them too. I would not be surprised. I probably wouldn't have to look too far. Google dot com exists, people. Google dot com exists. You can go on DolphinCounty.org and you can look up campaign returns since twenty eleven. And you will not be shocked that a lot, almost all the contracts that come up before up here are giving twenty-five-hundred thousand dollar donations. And the people who own them, the CEOs, are giving thousand dollar donations. I mean, come on. Who owns you? And then you use this this stage to give excuses for these people and squander our money. That's really wild to me, man. It's really wild. So thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Pamela Carson. City of Harrisburg. So there was a lot of things said today um about Michael Musser, about contracts, that I kind of knew, like I've been digging around in that in that for several years. Um just, there was a lot more connections made today for me. Thank you. And the money is a little bit more um stunning than I expected. But it was not um but it just confirms what I've been saying, that there is a culture of corruption in this county. And that this county and the authorities, you're merchants of death. And this continues to this continues to confirm that for me. Um and the authorities really need to clean house. Clearly, there are contracts that need to be terminated, whatever it costs us, and people need to go. And I'm listening to what I'm hearing today about the amount of money that has gone into private pockets. And I'm also sitting with the fact that George O'Connor asked for a forty-three thousand dollar increase in his salary. And meanwhile, I, in that same run of budget hearings, there was almost a fistfight that broke out with over forty-one thousand dollars in um the recorder of wills, register of wills. And the library sat here talking about having to possibly cut hours, followed by cut days, followed by closing branches. And that fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-year employees are not making fourteen thousand dollars. The names that I heard, um HRG, Dawood, um McNeese Partners, all of these are names that I've also heard at city council. I know I know how Mike Musser funds city campaigns too. And I'm tired of hearing about creative funding, that we have to find creative ways of funding things. My mother used to have a saying that she talked about people who laughed all the way to the bank. And was I, when I was a kid, I didn't understand what that was. But net, but as an adult, I get it. There are folks who are laughing all the way to the bank when they cash those checks or that check, um that consulting check um automatically hits their account. How can it be that we have people making the kinds of money that Mike Musser is with his contracts when we have people sitting in jail for small deaths who then die in jail? That we have opioid deaths, yet we're using opioid money to enrich someone? That we have the gun deaths that we have in this county while we've paid money to Commissioner Heist? I think that's a great name. Um and again, as you know, I always look at patterns and practices, and this is a pattern and practice of this county. And when I look at things as a white person through an anti-racist lens, I look at three things. I look at power, I look at privilege, and I look at who controls the resources. And you can lecture me all you would like, Commissioner Hartwick, about how I don't understand funding and how government works, but yes, I do. And I also understand by looking at who controls the resources in this county and where the money is going, and it's going to white people. So when we look at whether or not something is racist, we are looking at it in a big picture. And even if harm is not intended, harm happens, and it is not for me or you or any of you as white people to say whether or not black and brown people are being harmed or whether or not racism is happening. It is the two black men before me who named that, and that's who we need to listen to. And we will continue to be here. We will continue to be here over and over again until something changes. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Second.
All is favored indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?